All right, welcome to the Town Act and Planning Board meeting for October 17th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. I'll call the meeting to order. We'll all stand for the pledge.
Let me just say goodbye to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, uh, I've designated Roger here alternate tonight. Um, table September 19th minutes. There's a chance of review since we have myself, John, Andrew, and Roger here to vote on September 19th.
I think they're fine, but it was a number 19, not 18. And approval minutes in, and the section was 10.16. Did you get that, Dave?
Yup.
So, uh, I move we approve the meeting minutes of September 19th of those minor changes.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? All right, on to October 3rd, 2024.
Make a motion that we accept the, uh, October 3rd minutes as submitted.
Thomas Pearl. Otherwise known as Orange. I know, that's what I said. When the guy says.
Second motion.
On here. Are closed. Uh, well, Ben Smith with North Flares here with us again tonight. Um, so let's dive into the old business. Martell Estates LLC Martell Estate subdivision, preliminary subdivision application, 760 Youngsford Road. Tax map 217 lot 029. Come up and just go over the thing again. In case anyone's missed it.
Yes, good evening. I'm Brad Jones and, uh, with Jones Beach Engineers and here representing Arnie Martell on Martell Estates, which is located at 760 Youngsford Road. Last time we were in a meeting with the planning board, we went through great detail of the drainage system and, um, also kind of gave a good summary of, of the entire subdivision and how the lot configuration was and everything else. Uh, there were a few items that we had, um, for instance, the, um, open space. We had shown that on a plan, highlighted it, kind of brought it out to the board, and we wanted to, uh, kind of, you know, let everyone take a look at it. That now been plotted on, on the plans, on the full set of subdivision plans. And we decided to submit, I know at the last meeting we talked about just submitting a few sheets, but I started looking at it, a lot of stuff carries through with different plans and it's just easier to, uh, give everybody a, a, a fresh set with, uh, with the minor changes that are in there. Um, and we also submitted a drainage analysis and we gave all the board members, uh, the first 30 pages, which is really just a summary of the drainage analysis. And once again, Rob was, uh, here the last time to kind of go through and walk us through the, uh, the, the meadow buffers and forested buffers and everything else that we have on the property. So, um, I think everyone had a pretty good, um, explanation of that. I noticed, uh, one comment was about the, um, inside that drainage report, somebody actually went through it. Uh, there's a sample, uh, of declaration of restrictions and, um, we did submit that to the town. It, it mentions it in the drainage analysis and, and the document actually lies in the slotter. And the slotter is a, a permit that we submitted to DEP previously, so it's referring back to that. Uh, so we did, we did, uh, submit that and, um, and I think hopefully everyone's got a chance to look at how that is. So none of this gets recorded or done until the, you know, the end of the subdivision. Then we'll, we'll take care of these, uh, uh, declaration of restrictions and get all that paperwork together. The, um... So the other, the other items, uh, that we've, uh, modified in the plans, and once again, everyone's really had a chance to look at was metal buffers that, um, the residential metal buffers and, and we had them located away from the road. We moved them back closer to the road, um, and, uh, which is because the reason we did that, because we had a steep slope and we're able to, well, without the steep slope, uh, having the road at 10% we're able to modify those and put them back. But you, you look at this plan, you'll see that.
I'm trying to find the other one.
Yeah, in pink, um, you can see how it kind of wrapped around that steep slope.
They're around here.
And if you go back and look at this plan, you know, you can see we've aligned that back in the road, a much better location, easier to navigate that. So that, so that was one of the minor changes that's actually depicted on the plan at this point. Um, the other thing was we, we adjusted some of the culverts due to the road grade. So these are, there are cross culverts that run down, um, every, every couple of hundred feet and then it gets that stormwater across the road. And then those, that feeds into a, um, feeds into a level spreader. So it, it takes that stormwater, slows it down and disperses it, and then it takes its journey down through the, uh, the meadow buffers at that point. So we did adjust a couple of inverts, really just to match the, the new road grade. And we moved some of the level spreaders. Once again, we pushed them up closer to the road, which is really a better situation. Uh, you know, everything's kind of condensed and, um, everything's along the road rather than kind of sprawled out a little bit. So, um, other than that, um, we're here tonight to, uh, see if the, we can get our, we'd like to request a preliminary plan acceptance by the board. And I think at the last meeting we were close to that. I think the board felt that we, they wanted to have these added documents, drainage analysis and everything else. So, so we did provide all that in anticipation of the, of the next step. I don't know if any board members have any questions or...
I, I know the answer to this question, but I just want to hear it from you. The, in the submission you did, um, the additional runoff submission, uh, the soil report that was in it refers to two ponds and, you know, erosion control about those two ponds. But this submission, you've done away with that, those ponds, right?
Actually, I'll let Rob, you, that was probably the focal points?
No, no, that would have been actually, I think, the early, early submissions. So, yeah, so the, uh, the time, sorry, Robert Ozin with Waterstone Engineering. The, um, uh, I believe you're right. The, uh, the soils analysis would have just been referring to the earliest design that was out there. Since then, um, really since 20, I'm forgetting what year it is, 2021, I think was when we submitted it, revised it and submitted to DEP. Wasn't that 2021? I think it was late 2021. And, um, yeah, I believe that's right.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, so those ponds are all gone now, yeah.
Yeah, it was a substantial pond and it was down close to the stream and that was really what we needed to do. So, um, so by eliminating that, going to metal buffers, I think that was a, I mean, constructing that would have been a, you know, a, a lot of work at close to the stream and this is a much better situation than we have at this point.
And then moving, moving the, uh, the culverts and the spreaders, um, you haven't changed the number of those.
No.
Just the locations getting closer to the road.
Yeah, that's all it is. It just, it just pulled everything in, uh, to the road. So we've got, we have the same amount of, uh, level spreaders and, and, uh, cross culverts and everything else. They're actually in the same location as well.
And, and get Robert Ozin again. One other, uh, thing, maybe to mention that the, the main changes were really just to be responsive to DEP. So, you know, we had had a bunch of other, uh, plans. We'd originally planned to put ponds and then we'd have planned with all sorts of fire retention and infiltration trenches. And, and DEP was really preferring to use kind of the naturalized version where, uh, a heavy reliance on, on meadow buffers and level spreaders and all these things. Because in their mind, and it would fit this site really, really well, right? It's a 105 acre site. We only, we're really only adding about 10 lots to it and it could probably have three times this many, maybe four times this many lots. If, um, but because it's such a low density lot, uh, it makes, uh, these are really effective systems that require very low maintenance. So, um, you know, whereas an infiltration trench or a fire retention system or subsurface chambers, those you really have to stay on in terms of maintenance for their performance to work well over time. Uh, when you're, when you're, what you're really dealing with is a long, like sort of rock level spreader and big, heavy meadows, the, about, the extent of the, the maintenance is really, you know, mow it twice a year and don't, don't cut it too short. So it's, it works, it's, it's very protective, real low impact, and, uh, and that's what they were looking for.
Okay, Dan, can I just get a clarification on your memo here? Uh, the first bullet, paragraph 10.1. Subdivision consists of 10 new house lots, three additional lots, seven of those lots.
Hmm. Looks like that's a typo I may have missed. Um, the, there are seven lots on Puzzle Road that were approved by the planning board several years ago. Those are, uh, not part of tonight's review. They're shown on the plan and for, uh, stormwater purposes.
Yeah.
There are 10 new lots here. Uh, there are three additional existing lots that have been reconfigured. So that bullet is talking about the new lots, the reconfigured lots, and then the seven, um, lots with frontage on Puzzle Road.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a note to update that.
I'm ready to go to findings of fact.
That's it. I'll, I'll jump in here at this point. I, I feel like, um, again, summarizing since the last meeting, we made a few updates to this memo based on the, the additional information that came on the drainage. We did talk about homeowners association or covenants for maintenance of the road and the stormwater. Uh, for example, who's going to mow the, the, the buffers and do that maintenance as required? So the, the draft findings are starting on page three. And there are conclusions at the end, uh, for the preliminary plan that are still in the form of, uh, you know, will or will not, shall or shall not, um, form. That's, that's for the board to make those conclusions. But having said, uh, if there's any other updates to the findings, like you just mentioned, uh, they're draft findings, they're based on our review of the materials and you should confirm that if there's any additional information, that this should be in here uh, before the board acts on this application, that that's reflected. The applicant has asked for a vote tonight that is consistent with the timeline and the ordinance. There was a public hearing at the last, last time this was here, a couple of weeks ago. So, uh, there's, uh, going to be an opportunity to go through the findings and, and conclusions. But when the board is ready, uh, there's a draft motion at the top of page three. So were there any particular findings, John, that you wanted to?
No, but I think we have to overtly, um, as a board, make the findings a fact, right?
Yeah, they, they should be reviewed. You can go through them, uh, page by page if you'd like. Um, ultimately, that motion does say that, you know, you're going to be acting on an application based on the findings. So please do make sure you're familiar with what those say.
Well, I guess we just, we should walk through each section, right? For the, for the findings, 10-1 through whatever it is. And I don't propose to read it all, but I guess, for instance, for 10-1, um, you know, these most giddy lots, the lots, uh, within the right length to whip ratios. They received a waiver for the stone monument.
Okay, and I see it still says is requesting a waiver.
Yup.
So I, in my view, the, the, uh, the plan comports with the subdivision lay of requirements. Utilities will be underground. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, okay with 10.1.
All right. 10-2 is sufficient water supply. We did get information from, um, the engineers on the wells of abutting, um, abutters that showed sufficient water supply. But it's, you know, it's not very many, uh, it's not a big density project. There's not many wells in the 88 acres. The state, um, the application they made to the state said they had made adequate provision for sufficient, uh, and quality water. So, in my view, the sufficient water supply requirement has been met.
I would agree. Yeah.
All right, to go forward, Pat?
Thank you. You need it.
Okay. Um, three is your, 10-3 is erosion and sedimentation impact. They, uh, have a, you know, a, I would call it a significant plan in place uh, that the state has, um, conditionally approved. Uh, we've got the plan in the E-sheets. Yeah, E1, E1 through 3, um, so I think they've met that requirement. Sewage, um, there's going to be individual, uh, septics per lot. They have plenty of room for the, um, 100-foot radius from the wells. They did the soil survey. Sufficient space. So I think sewage disposal was covered. There is some flexibility in the individual lots, but, um, you know, they can't, they have to maintain, the house can't be any bigger than what they, they proposed. So, you know, any, in my view, any modifications aren't going to impact sewage and wells. There's plenty of room for setbacks and, and the 100 feet requirement.
They have to meet all first time system requirements anyway.
Yeah. 10-5 is solid waste. They're going to send it to the transfer station. They're going to use private hauler. No issues there. 10-6 is the impact on natural beauty aesthetics, historic sites, habitat, natural areas or public access to the shoreline. Uh, there is no public access to the shoreline. Uh, they did in their, uh, this application to the state, they showed, um, that we know wildlife, uh, issues. They aren't located on, yeah, it's not on a ridge or the green belt. The applicant's already started planting trees as he was required. The historical, the state historical site and... I can't remember those guys' names. There were a couple of plants, but they're in the, they're not going to be impacted. They're in the, in the, uh, the wetland and they have, uh, sufficient buffer. So they weren't going to be impacted. There it is, historic sites. No impact on historic sites from the state historic provision committee. Uh, fisheries and wildlife. Found that they made adequate provision for protection of fisheries and wildlife.
Quick question, John. As you're going through, uh, some of those more specific things, do you want those reflected in the findings relative to inland fisheries and historic preservation? Those aren't bullet points in the findings, but those are certainly part of what they'd submitted.
I'm just trying to be comprehensive in what is required and what they submitted.
Right. So I'm making a couple notes. I've noted a couple revisions. Should, should the findings be revised to show that they've submitted those letters from inland fisheries and historic?
Yeah, it's referred to in their response from the state. Okay. Number 10-6. Oh, we did the, that's also where the, uh, the 5% came in. And we now have 25 acres, I think.
Yeah.
Open space, well more than the 5%. Then that also, that section also refers to homeowner association documents. And, you know, that, that's a coming attraction. So I think what, you know, that probably is the condition we get to the end is, you know, that those documents have to be reflected and the state wants to see it anyway, I think, in their, in their requirement. Compliance with the zoning ordinance. I think Ben went through those. So they, they meet the minimum lot sizes and dimension requirements. And then Ben went through the requirements of good neighbor standards. And I think I need to go through all those, but, uh, the end result is they meet the, the requirements of good neighbor standards. Some are in A, like side marks, but the, um... Everybody okay?
Yup.
Well, they retain Jones Beach Engineers. We've got the estimates on the costs and, um... Some, one of the submissions, we got a letter from a bank, didn't we?
Yes, yeah, Enterprise Bank, yeah.
Yeah, so we have a letter from the bank destined to the financial capacity. Ten nine is groundwater quality. According to the EP, they are not going to impact groundwater quality. Or quantity, the, that last submission, there was also some rain event reviews you had done that showed the rain event didn't impact the water quality. So I think not only did the DEP make that statement, but they had at least two rain events that they went out and checked. And although some surrounding areas had some problems, the, the this project didn't have any problems in terms of, in terms of the runoff and the quality of the runoff.
Yeah, if I may, Robert Ozin again. Yeah, there were, we, we, we had monitored several rain events, really some pretty large rain events. And this is, this was in, in response to concerns that had been voiced about erosion, erosion or, or poorly maintained job site. And, and our position was that that really wasn't the case. And rather than, you know, disputing it, what he said, she said, it's easier to just go down and, and actually do some monitoring following this large storm and, and then submit that to DEP. And the site performed great. I mean, big storms, lots of runoff and little or, or no concerns at all. And we know with, you know, if we compare it to, say, Camp Rhodes as an example, I mean, it's just a, it's a kind of a problem around here. Right? You have Camp Rhodes and they run off. This is, this site, because of some of the early concerns that had been raised, has really widespread, well-managed erosion control. And that's, that's really what those, those numbers demonstrated that. So I'd be happy to elaborate on that if, if folks are interested at all.
Thank you. Ready to go on?
Yep.
Ten ten is floodplain management. They did add a, although I don't think it really applies.
There is a floodplain on
One of those.
One of the properties, but it doesn't, it's, doesn't come into the building envelope area. So it doesn't really apply to this, well, it does, but not with the construction will be.
Well, they did add the note to the plan anyway. It says it'll be a foot above the hundred year flood elevation if it's open in that area. I didn't think it works. Okay. The wetlands were identified. They're identified on the documents. That's what we all need there. Stormwater management.
Was there a timeline on what they, did they guys, they give you some kind of timeline on when they were going to approve the new one?
DEP?
Yeah. No?
We'll see. Yeah. They're still pretty busy in fact.
Backed out.
Yeah.
But
I didn't know where you already had one from the previous one where you, you weren't compacting the site anymore. They were just kind of, that's what we're hoping, hoping will happen.
Yeah. Personally, I think it's a really good stormwater management plan. They've got a license on the phosphorus from the state. We'll just wait here from the state, I guess. I guess that will be the condition here. It's not a cluster, which is ten, everybody okay there?
Yep.
Ten thirteen is clusters, it's not a cluster. Fourteen is compliance with timber harvesting rules. They complied back, what, under fifteen or sixteen? Fifteen is traffic conditions and streets. The road's going to be private. It's got a T-turnaround, which is authorized with low volume. This is where the site's in, the site's standards are well met. Over three fifty in each direction with Young's Ridge Road. That trail that goes from three seven, that's not open to the public, right?
That's correct. It's not.
So that's the requirements.
So based on those findings, you should be able to make, you know, basically be able to complete those conclusions on the last page of the memo, last page is done in eleven. I think this is where I would also ask that the board kind of review and just kind of make some, you know, I will presume based on the discussion, you're going to, you're going to answer those, you know, about the proposed subdivision will or will not. An answer would be will not result in undue water pollution or air pollution. So if, if you want to go down through each of those individually as well, you could certainly do that. Otherwise, you could go back to that memo on page three and I would update those in the, the letter coming out of the meeting.
I'm not sure what your recommendation is. Do we need to do the conclusion, conclusions of law?
So those conclusions are based on the findings, based on the findings you just read through. So the findings have been updated. They made a few notes on typos and things that have been updated since the, the last meeting, which I missed. So based on that, the conclusions are one through twenty. And those are what the board should be doing. Kind of making a, like, a collusion on. So if you want, I can read through them or you can read through them, John or Mr. Chair. And, you know, I think the idea would be just, because I left them as will or will not has or does not have, I think it'd be appropriate to answer that just for the record and for the minutes.
And then go with the motion?
Yep.
Okay. All right. The conclusions, number one, the proposed subdivision will or will not result in undue water or air pollution. They suggested will not. Stop me if you disagree. The subdivision will or will not have sufficient water available for the reasonably foreseeable needs of the subdivision. They will have sufficient. Proposed subdivision will not cause a, or will or will not cause an unreasonable burden on an existing water supply. Will not cause. Everybody okay?
Yep.
The subdivision will or will not cause unreasonable soil erosion or reduction in the capacity of the land to hold water. It will not cause unreasonable. Subdivision will or will not cause unreasonable highway of public road congestion or unsafe conditions. Will not. Subdivision will or will not provide for adequate solid and sewage waste disposal. Will. Everybody good?
Yep.
Yes.
Subdivision will or will not cause an unreasonable burden on the ability of a municipality to dispose of solid waste and sewage. Will not. Will or will not place unreasonable burden on the ability of the local governments to provide municipal or government services. Will not place. Everybody good?
Yep.
Yes.
Do we need a statement from the school?
Do, I was, I was going to say, we got a statement from, sorry. We got a statement from the, the fire chief already, right?
Yeah. The, the road commissioner.
And the road commissioner. So I know, I know from that respect.
I'll get one from the
Mr. Ross.
I, I do have a letter, it's, fuck, before we had COVID, so I do have a letter. I'll get a copy.
From the
From the school?
From the school?
No impact.
Okay.
And that was for the larger subdivision?
Yeah, and that was for the larger one.
Okay.
The larger one was only a concept land anyhow. This guy carried away, but they gave me a letter based on the larger one.
That was Mr. Ross?
Yeah, I think so. It was just before, almost before when I had this and then COVID, so it was probably
Okay, yeah, so it'd be Mr. Ross.
Yeah.
Did you send that in the package?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, so that was eight. So that will not place then a burden. We'll look for that letter to support that. Number nine, the subdivision will or will not have an undue adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty of the area. And so it will not. I think it's a really beautiful spot over there.
Yeah.
The subdivision will or will not be in accordance with a duly adopted vision. Our subdivision regulation. Eleven, the subdivision has, does not have adequate financial and technical capability, capacity to meet the standards. You mean has? Whenever situated in a hole or in part within two hundred and fifty feet of a pond, lake, river or tidal waters, the proposed subdivision will or will not adversely affect the quality of such body of water. Will not. Underview of flood is shown on the plan. Fresh water wetlands have been identified on maps. Fifteen, any rivers, streams or brooks within or abutting the proposed subdivision have or have not been identified on maps as part of the application. They have been. The subdivision will or will not provide for adequate, adequate stormwater management. They will. I'm going until I hear an objection. Any lots in the proposed subdivision with frontage on river stream, brook or great pond have or do not have a lot depth to shore frontage ratio greater than five to one. They do not have greater ratio. Long-term cumulative effects of proposed subdivision will or will not in reasonably increase the great pond's phosphorus concentration during the construction phase and life of the proposed subdivision. Will not. If the subdivision cross, if the, that's in A, doesn't cross municipal bounds, timber on the parcel has not been harvested in violation of liquidation harvesting statutes and rules. Has not.
So there, as I mentioned, there is a, call it a pattern motion. There's a motion, suggested motion on page three. I would make a note that it's probably worth, where it says, kind of in the middle, it's reflected in the public record and the findings affecting conclusions of law in the planner memo dated October fourteenth. I would say, and as amended at the October seventeenth planning board meeting. And I would also say, at the last line where it says the application, it, it should probably say for clarity, the preliminary plan application. And then if there's any conditions, those would be listed as well. And a couple of potential conditions.
Give me that last one again. What do you want?
So the very last sentence, where it says, the, me, find that the preliminary subdivision plan application satisfies or does not satisfy the applicable standards of the subdivision ordinance and therefore approves or denies the application for, subject to the following conditions. It does say preliminary subdivision application above that, but if you want to also say preliminary application, right before it says, subject to the following conditions, that might be appropriate as well. Couple notes for potential, for potential conditions. One would be, I think there was a little discussion about the homeowners association. John, when you were going through, the app did, did some covenants and declarations that in my mind were serving that purpose. Find if that's going to meet the board's need for some of the hits of the road and the storm, road and the stormwater? Are the, are the covenants and deed restrictions, is that, that submitted, was it? View funds and that kind of thing.
Yeah. The, the intent is for ultimately a homeowners association to take ownership and control over those common elements. The buffers on the, on the individual lots can sort of be maintained. If the lots are subject to those, there's going to be, you know, deed restrictions governing what can and can't be done on those individual lots. But ultimately, yes, these lots are conveyed out. And we've already submitted draft HOA documents to DEP, which we are going to finalize. So I'd be happy to do the same for the town.
So from my standpoint, I, I don't know that that needs to be a condition of approval for preliminary review, but it might be something that the board would want to understand where that's at for a final.
For a final.
For a final, yeah. The other thing I made it on is relative to that letter from the superintendent, that could be a condition of approval if the board looks for that basically at the final plan stage. It'd be a condition, it'd be a condition at this, at this point.
What about approval for the latest update on the erosion sediment plan?
So the, the DEP does need to approve the overall stormwater plan. And part of that is the sedimentation erosion control. I believe that's a requirement at final. If you want to just be explicitly clear, that says, you know, we have received this, but this approval is contingent upon DEP approval, that would be fine as well. That, that could be a second condition. I didn't have any other potential conditions.
Anybody else? All right, well, I guess I'll make a motion, Mrs. Chairman.
Sure.
Since Ben's written it up for me, sort of. Based upon the application related documents and information provided by the applicant, the written and oral comments of the applicant, reviewing officials, and members of the public as reflected in the record and the findings of fact and conclusions of law in the planner memo dated fourteen April and as amended in October, October planning board meeting, planning board finds subdivision plan applica- the... Youngs Ridge Road application satisfies the applicable standards of the subdivision ordinance and therefore, uh, approves the appli- the preliminary plan application subject to the conditions of receiving, uh, a copy of the school superintendent's letter with regard to impact on the school system and is conditioned on final DEP approval of, uh, the segmentation and erosion plans.
HOA.
HOA.
HOA docs.
Oh, and the HOA docs. Yeah, okay.
I'll second that, uh, with a slight change, um, you had said April fourteenth, I put October fourteenth.
Did I say something? I heard, but I didn't. You wanna say something?
Just a, a clarifying question, so we have a DEP permit, um, already. I think DEP will need to approve some of these minor changes that we discussed tonight, hopefully in the form of a minor revision or for some amendment to the approval that we already have, so, um, is the... Is that condition regarding DEP approval, um, I'm wondering if that should apply to final approval.
Yeah, I think that's what DEP was trying to say.
Right.
It's the final, for, that you want for final and not preliminary.
Yeah, it would happen.
Right, right. Yeah.
Okay. All in favor? All opposed? All set?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Have a good night, gentlemen.
You too.
You too.
You too.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you.
Who was the second?
Great, great.
Would you see the range of, would you see that the date coming? I didn't hear, so I... All right. Uh, one more point to...
Okay. I will excuse myself.
Okay.
Are you in the office tomorrow?
Yes.
Tomorrow morning.
Okay.
It doesn't have to have an office, so. See, next week, just try to figure out who's doing this next.
Okay. Okay, sounds great. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Ben.
All right, first up is James, no, no Jeff?
Works for me.
All right. Fifty-four, Tenth Street, tax match, one, four, seven, dot zero, three, three, application of greatest practical extent, and I'm assuming you have my James, your title.
Yeah.
Just for the, obviously for the record, this is a complete teardown of the existing camp and build a new single family lawn. Fifty-four, Tenth Street. Um, they have, correct me if I'm wrong, kind of, they, about thirty percent is already used up on this one. Um, so they're pretty much stuck with, um, all the same area, um, with this, with this particular project. He is proposing to update the septic. And replacing foundation, Tom?
Yeah, 'cause it's moving all the way back.
Yeah. Oh, I have, uh, there with, can you, let me just pull, I'll pull up, uh, I have a bigger copy of the map, uh, where I have a digital map here. And I did that just because the, uh, couldn't really see the distances and things such, um, you really can't see it 'cause it's nice and blurry on there, but it does say proposed is fifty-seven point one, uh, closest point being down here. Uh, so fifty-seven point one would be the, to that corner, eight point two, um, off the property line, it is currently right now seven point one. Uh, the other side is seven point seven, and it is currently sitting at six point six, at its closest points. Um, we are, he is, it's not we, he, uh, is proposing to remove, uh, concrete, um, as well as the camp, the patio is tied to the retaining wall, so, um, that is looking to stay. So, the, um, shed will be removed, lowering his lot calculation, um, from thirty-seven, and he's proposing to come down to twenty-nine. So, it's at thirty-seven point nine, so pretty much thirty-eight, and he's gonna be at twenty-nine point seven.
So, the walkway and the shed equals the six hundred and eighty square feet, it's coming off?
Yeah, and, uh, the walkway, the shed, all, you know, um, all is down, I believe so, yeah. The driveway will all be torn up anyway, 'cause that's where the new septic's going, so smaller driveway can go in as well.
Is that included in the six eighty?
Yeah.
It is.
And we're going right back to the fifty-foot road setback, so far, as far back as we can with the overheads. This...
That's D.
That's fifty, and then the... This is the hundred, the blue line is your hundred. Do you have a testament on what, I know you don't have it on hand, on what it is from the water right now?
Hmm, no, I would say, that's, um, I don't know, fifteen? Fifteen or more or less.
Right.
Where are you talking about this?
Did you say you shrink in the driveway?
Yeah.
So, is that retaining wall coming out around here?
Uh, usually the wall there is back sometimes. I'm not fully sure until that gets dug.
Because you said you're gonna dig there too, so it's just hypothetically, maybe.
Probably gonna go, but it's hard to...
Why would you wanna do that?
I don't know, but you're digging there, so.
Yeah, so you know I have it, can retain.
They don't even put a wall in there for no reason, you say?
Well, I understand, but is it gonna get damaged when you're digging?
Okay.
Yeah, but it doesn't get touched on, yeah.
If it does get touched, would you repair it, can I repair it?
Tenth Street. Uh, it might be on a septic design. Yeah, that's the neighbor's well, I think they have a dug well under the camp, I'm ninety-eight percent sure, a point or a dug well under the camp.
Are they putting it under what?
That'd be the most likely, uh, drilled well.
Some of your lot coverage, the three sixty-eight, is that existing patio? It doesn't include the shed, I think it's going away.
Is shed and patio.
It's both the shed and the patio?
Yeah.
The shed's going away, right?
Yeah.
So, that's part of... I'm just trying to get to the six eighty.
So, I'm right, uh, right here, you have some building data, uh, up, it's on the ground.
Who's the second shed?
There's two sheds on the property, there's second sheds. Some of, oh, the wellhouse.
It's the wellhouse, it's a point right in the front.
Yeah, it's the, uh, I can show you which one it is on here, one second. This green one right here.
Okay, go back to those numbers.
Oh, yep. But that, is that wellhouse on patio, one of the patios, the green one?
No, it's on the neighbor's property off the patio.
It's on the neighbor's property?
I don't even know which shed it is.
Oh. If you look at the, um, survey, that's one of those jobs that, um, doesn't all get on one property. It, uh, that patio and retaining wall was redone a couple of years ago, it was, um, done by, um, before my time, so it was, it was inspected and signed off on by, um, pre- my predecessor, uh, as well as had a permit from the state.
So, the second shed, the wellhouse, is actually on the right-of-way area, showing on the drawing here?
Is that actually on a septic design somewhere?
Do you have a septic design in front of you?
Is the wellhouse on a septic design somewhere?
Uh, it's on this survey, it shows it as shed. On the li- as Roger just pointed out, on the right-of-way. He's replacing that well, that well with, um, a drill block? Wait, uh, oh, I thought you said, I thought you made that comment.
I, it's tough luck to get a well down with water, so I don't, yeah, a goal is, but I don't know how to go with it.
We have the right-of-way area, that's the shed, we put wellhouse on it, in the right-of-way.
So, that, that shed shouldn't be part of the calculation, right? It's not, right?
I didn't use that shed in any calculation.
What's the second shed there?
There's two sheds, you only use patio and shed in my calculation for the...
Oh, okay.
One shed on top and the patio.
They use the one sixty and then the one twenty-eight, that brings you to two sixty-eight. You have three sixty-eight, so where, where are you at there?
'Cause I have a, when I measured the patio, it's bigger than that.
Oh, okay.
You don't know some of the patio should be in, it appears to be on.
Honestly, it's, yeah, you're... Patio says those, that's a weird situation.
So, how much of the dry, pavement driveway are you looking to shrink?
Well...
I think we can get more than six eighty if I have to go.
I guess my comment would be, if we're, everything's permitted with the thirty-eight percent, can I keep the thirty-eight percent?
Well, the requirement's twenty percent, so we're trying to get you down below the thirty-nine percent or thirty-eight percent.
Right, that's why I was trying to take six eighty off, I thought was...
Well, right, but you got a, a large paved area there that you said was gonna get torn up, I'm just wondering if it all stays, does it all get repaved, or is there some to be, some area to be reclaimed there?
Yeah, so I have about three hundred square feet of pavement disappearing.
So, that six eighty includes three hundred from there?
Well, yeah, I took away the, well... Yeah, I took away the, wow, I apologize. The six eighty shed, one sixty, so, yeah, about, I guess.
Is the patio, the thing, the walkway, which, which one is the walkway in that number there?
So, these are done by assessors, not anybody that knows.
Block coverage.
Yeah, these are someone, like, you have a patio that's on somebody else's, half on somebody else's property.
Okay.
So these numbers are a reference point. I really, I know where you're going, John, and I, I apologize for what you're doing, I just, they're not accurate. Because we don't know what's on, as you see right now, I have a patio that's on a survey, it's been depicted half on the property, half on. As well as a shed that's on another property, so.
All right, so tell me how you came up with six eighty then, Tyler, I guess that's the question.
Uh, shed and all the concrete steps and I'm gonna get the, end of the day, thirty percent lock coverage, so I'm gonna have the house in. I can only pave as much as I can to get thirty percent, if that was agreed on. So I was just trying to get it down, I didn't wanna take anything off it, cause if I'm all grandfather thirty-eight percent, if I'm a homeowner, I'd want thirty-eight percent, as far as I'm concerned. But I'm trying to weasel it down to under thirty percent, so I was just trying to make some cuts and make it more appealing, I guess. And taking out the nice concrete steps and adding filtration steps, I don't think most homeowners would like, but that's what I'm proposing for him, so.
The second page, there's a two surface, he did another page on that survey, so it kinda shows him what he's doing for re-education. As, as to the stairs in the house and stormwater, the, um, get the extra, we add grass in the front, all, all the houses will get gutters.
Tyler, this is gonna be a year-round residence? This could be a year-round resident?
Well, it'll be built year-round, I don't know if they'll live there year-round.
Okay, well, one of the questions I had, so, um, looking at the, uh...
That's a seasonal conversion, if he does go, that just isn't in my office. So right now they designed it to, it meets a, the dwelling will meet a year-round residence?
Yep.
If he decides, right now they did it as a seasonal, cause that's what it was, if they decide that they wanna live there year-round, he has to come in for seasonal conversion.
Good. Um, I'm just, so, looking at the wastewater application, application, um, it's so it's not a, it's other, so they must be pulling out of the lake.
I don't think so, I think it's underneath and she maybe not, didn't know that, but it could be, I guess, I can text him right now and find out.
So, I, well, I'm just, I'm just saying, so there's, if, if it's gonna be a year-round residence, you know, they would have to have a drilled well.
They could have dug well or point.
Okay, or point, yeah, but you would have to have some sort of water supply.
No, other than...
Other than pulling out of the well.
Correct, exactly, yeah.
Okay, so, I guess, um, where would that be on, on this, you know?
The goal is to get the well closest you can to the water and the septic as far away from the lake as possible, so. Yeah, but that's a big slope, so the goal is gonna be to drill a well, I don't know if I can get a well truck down there, a well truck's gonna wanna go down there. So it may have to be a point or a dug well, I guess. I don't know if that answered your question.
Will it, will it meet the, you have to be, what, minimum of a hundred feet?
That's first-time system, so with, uh, replacement systems, I am allowed to give a variance down to sixty feet. Below sixty, the state gets involved and I believe they can go down to, I think, forty-nine feet. So it's all, it's, it's, yeah, there are variances, so this is already getting a variance because, um, the neighbor's dug well is at, or whatever well neighbor has is at sixty.
Yeah, we already have sixty.
So that's, this is, if you can see, um...
Technically, I can put, as crazy as this is, I can put that septic in first and then dig the well right next to it, I just can't do it in the opposite order. Where is that, just by...
Yeah, first-time systems, a hundred feet at minimum, so that during the application for the subdivision, that's why I was like, it has to all meet its first time. Hundred feet from the water, hundred feet from any septic system or well, none of that stuffs, but this is not the case.
Okay.
What was that, how close was that?
Three seven... Uh, it is fifty-seven point one for the proposed closest. So you have, you have a few measurements here, John, you have fifty-seven point one from the water. You have seven point seven from this property line and you also have eight point two from here. Cause they're all non, everywhere on this is non-conforming. This is six point six, this is seven point three, he's shrinking it a foot almost, or he's giving up a foot.
He's coming more conform.
Yeah, he's trying, yeah, he's trying to make it more non-conforming, thank you, Tyler. I can hear that too often. As well as, um, lock coverage from thirty-seven point nine to twenty-nine point seven. So there's, there's a few things going on in this.
I'll make a motion that the application, we, um, the application for greatest practical extent for Jamie Mutter at fifty-four Tenth Street, Acton, map one forty-seven, lot zero thirty-three, be approved with the following conditions. Home no closer than fifty-seven feet from the water and the boundary, uh, setbacks be no closer than...
They got seven point seven on the right side?
Eight point two on the left.
Eight point two on the left side.
Seven, seven point seven and eight point two. And that the lock coverage be reduced from thirty-seven point nine percent to twenty-nine, twenty-nine point seven percent.
I'll second that.
All in favor? All opposed?
Twenty-nine point seven.
All right, next up? Ned Cardinelli?
Cardinelli.
Good enough. Two thirty Hawk Road, tax map one thirty-seven, lot zero two one, application for greatest practical extent, and I'm assuming it's Tyler Mathis again. It's turning our first floor deck into a living space.
Correct.
Uh, so, uh, my, well, this was a scenario where I made him get a new septic. His septic was, this is for you, Pat. Uh, his septic, his previous septic was, um, designed for a low efficiency, no, um, no clothes washer, a low-efficiency toilet, um, two bedrooms. Let's just say that's not what was going on in the house. Um, so now he's coming to, up to date with a new Fuji system, uh, because of the size of the location, the size of the lot. So, yeah, he's having a pretreatment, um, tank and aerator, that's what the Fuji system is. Um, and the addition is on the backside of the camp.
I'll show you.
How many bedrooms in this?
In the house now?
Yeah.
Two? So he's turning this deck into living space, so he's not increasing the footprint, but he's putting, he needs to put a foundation in the ground, hence why he's in front of the planning board, um, to do so. Same footprint. And just make sure it's tough and ready.
No, it's not same footprint as that.
It's not same footprint?
It's extending just three feet, so I tried to show him one of those colored photos, the expansion of the deck, to make it more secure.
It's somewhere in there, that's where I go.
No, it's not, I need to tell you. I'll come here and see what happens.
It is.
Don't be ridiculous.
Somewhere over there. Maybe need a fork.
I didn't put them together, that's all I'm gonna say at this point.
Oh, I put everyone together, everyone had a ticket.
Someone's gonna prove me wrong.
You're probably sitting on it.
I see it right there, it's under your table.
No, that's not right.
Stick it with it, it's over there.
Tyler, I don't have the thing because Chris lost his.
How far off the road is it?
Um, sixty-four four now and then it'll be sixty-one four.
Okay. Sixty-one four?
Yeah, proposed.
Where are you getting the, taking away the square footage and the driveways other on the lock coverage?
Um, there's a patio kind of between the driveway and the the deck and whatnot, which will go and become lawn.
Is this what you're talking about, this patio?
Yeah. So almost a wash of what I'm adding and taking, but just a little bit different, super small lot, there's really...
I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept the application for greatest practical extent for Ned Cardinelli, map one thirty-seven, lot zero two one. With the, uh, proposed addition be no closer than sixty-one feet four inches. Hawk Road. And not to go over the extension that was specified.
And reduce the lock coverage by to thirty-seven point six percent. I wanna make sure that ends okay today.
Yes.
One second. All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. You all right, John?
Any other things in mind?
Nothing right now, just, um, I'm gonna talk with Ben, um, Ben Smith, um, we'll probably eat it tomorrow, the beginning of the week, um, about the final submission.
be probably either tomorrow, the beginning of the week, um, about the final submission that these guys are gonna be doing, and then how to proceed. I'll go touch with you, Chris, and the remaining board members, what's gonna happen. Right now we have a meeting, but I have nothing on the agenda other than, uh, that application. I gotta have, probably have to have you guys come in and do it, or we're gonna have to figure something out, um, yeah, no, answer your question. It's, all it is, is we gotta have, so what we gotta do is get, eee, so, if you're doing it on your phone, I can probably do it for you, just copying mine, because what happened was they changed servers, so we need to just change some of the, like, the information down there, so you can get it on your phone. If you wanted to do it on your computer, it's a little bit different, probably use my computer and just copy it. So if you guys wanna come in someday, uh, let, let us know, so I and I can do my best, I'm not a tech whiz, but, um, I can look at what he did to my computer, as well as what he did to my phone, and we can mimic it. If you have, uh, Apple, if you're Android, I might have to ask what, what different numbers they need to go to. Yeah, no, the emails aren't situated, it was kind of a really bad hiccup when they changed the servers over.
What, you said, is it just to sign the, the plan? The pre-plan, next meeting? You said this, this project is on the...
So, no, we're waiting, we're gonna figure, I gotta talk to Ben about the final, where we go forward with the final submission, final plan submission with, with, uh, that applicant. Um, and see if they're ready to move forward for the next, to the next meeting, but there's gonna be some information needed, because they have some of those things before we even, you know, get to, really get to the nitty-gritty and finish it off, so... I don't know if they're gonna be ready for that, or if they're gonna wait for a DDP. I mean, I don't, I'm not, I'm assuming that's not gonna happen in one meeting anyway, but, um, I just wanna talk to him and and the applicant, and see where they are, you know? So I'll be...
There's a time limit for them to get in the final too, right?
Yeah, 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 it's, I wanted to say it was like six months or something like that, but, maybe not, it might have been nine days. Uh, yeah, that's fine. So yeah, I'll get in touch with you guys, I'll let you know, but I'm assuming we'll have something on the agenda, if not, night off.
On that note? Hold on. Don't shave apart.
Oh, yeah.
I'm a weird journalist, Tyler.
I'll second that.
All in favor? All opposed?